Counselor King.
President.
Counselor Martin.
Present.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Wheeler.
Present.
Counselor Thomas has been excused.
Remarks of the public on agenda items only.
None on agenda items now?
We'll record some announcements from the mayor. Lord, I can't be happy.
Um, none at this time.
None at this time. New business. You're gonna have a here tonight a presentation by the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District? You're gonna wait there? You want to go report to counsel while we're waiting on that? We're gonna wait.
We can wait. What's your name, young man?
Joseph Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, good to see you, brother, from the Northeast Ohio Sewer District.
I appreciate that.
Welcome to him, man.
It's good to be in East Cleveland.
Was that a big document?
What's that?
Was that a big document?
Yeah, somewhat.
Grant, you want to go ahead and get started?
Sure.
We'll get to it with them.
Okay. All right. My name is Joseph Jenkins. I'm a government affairs specialist for the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. I just want to begin by saying thanks to counsel for allowing us to come out. We've done thus far two outreach meetings in East Cleveland to kind of gauge the thoughts of the community. We wanted to make sure that we got in front of counsel to let you know some of the things that we have, at least proposed plans for work in East Cleveland. I'm gonna try and be brief tonight, all right? I'm gonna try and speak for about fifteen minutes, maybe seventeen when I timed it out, so hopefully you'll bear with me. But basically what I'm gonna do is just give you a brief introduction about the sewer district, who we are, what we do. I'm gonna explain our project Clean Lake to you, and essentially that's gonna be an explanation of combined sewer overflow, what it is, why it's important. That will lead me into the East One Fortyth Relief Sewer Project and green infrastructure, okay? Green infrastructure basins are the things we're proposing to do in East Cleveland. So that'll be an explanation of, again, what they are and why we're coming. And then I'll end with just briefly next steps, so some logistics, timeframe, elements like that. So who we are. The Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District was created in nineteen seventy-two by court order. It's a political subdivision of Ohio, and it's governed by a board of trustees. The trustees represent both the city of Cleveland and our sixty-one member communities. They're a separate and distinct entity from the city of Cleveland and from Quahog County. What do we do? We're in the business of cleaning and treating wastewater. We serve over a million customers. We own and operate a large system of interceptor sewers, which we also maintain. We own and operate three wastewater treatment facilities. These facilities treat ninety billion gallons of wastewater each year. Our East Cleveland facility is located on Lake Shore Boulevard, treats East Cleveland as well as many of the suburbs in northeastern Ohio. The sewer district is also charged with handling combined sewer overflow. We're charged with controlling this issue, and that's something that I'll describe in detail shortly. So again, what do we do? We own and operate a network that comprises three hundred and twelve miles of district-owned interceptor sewers, okay? When you see this map, that's juxtaposed with a network of over three thousand miles worth of local sewers, okay? So the way that I would ask you to conceptualize this is that the district interceptor sewers are like a tree trunk, okay? Your local sewers are like the branches that feed into that tree trunk. And all of this is getting wastewater to our facility so that it can be cleaned and sent safely back into our environment, all right? Now, the one thing to understand is that our local communities are... Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The one thing to understand is that our local communities are charged with making sure that they're within code regulations because all of the system ties in together, okay? But just understand that the district handles the major things, all right? What you're looking at now is a map of what's called the combined sewer area, okay? The green area is the part of northeast Ohio that is subject to combined sewers, all right? And so, as you see, East Cleveland is circled in this map. So the logical question, what's a combined sewer, all right? A combined sewer is simply a system, a sewer system, that is designed to hold both sanitary flow and stormwater runoff in one pipe, all right? So there's one definition. Now here's another one. What's sanitary flow? Sanitary flow, you wake up in the morning, you brush your teeth, what goes down the drain from your home? Sanitary flow. You flush your toilet. Sanitary flow. This is what comes from your homes and your businesses, all right? What is stormwater runoff? Stormwater runoff, quite simply, when it rains or when there's just snow and that snow melts, this is the water that is in your street that goes into the sewer, okay? So again, a combined sewer system is one that's designed to hold both stormwater runoff and sanitary flow into one pipe, okay? So what my next couple slides are gonna do are explain to you what a combined, how a combined sewer system works. And this will also explain the issue of combined sewer overflow. So on a nice day like this, when it's not raining, the combined sewer system actually works pretty well, okay? If you can see the diagram, what you have is your sanitary flow, which I described, coming from your home, going to your local sewer, into the district interceptor, it goes to the wastewater treatment facility where it's cleaned and goes into the lake, no problem, okay? Now you take a day where there's like a moderate rain, all right? Now, you have your sanitary flow from your home, it mixes with the stormwater runoff into the one pipe, into the combined sewer, but again, everything's okay. Goes into the local sewer, goes into the district interceptor, to the wastewater treatment facility, it's cleaned, treated, into the lake, we're all okay. The issue of combined sewer overflow arises when you have those heavy rain events. And this is something, I don't know how many of you are Cleveland natives, I've been here the majority of my life, okay? This is something that happens a lot in Cleveland. This is when you have your major rain event. This is when you have also those sloppy days in like March or April when there's been a major snow and all of a sudden it's forty-two degrees and the snow's all melting, okay? When that happens, this combined sewer system is stressed to the point where it all can't go to the wastewater treatment facility safely, okay? So what that results in is a combined sewer overflow. The diagram kind of shows it, all right? So the sanitary flow mixes with the stormwater runoff, and instead of it going out to the wastewater treatment facility where everything is okay for the environment, for the people in the community, some of it outflows directly into the environment, okay? And I'll show you a picture that illustrates this, but I just want to, you know, make sure that I crystallize it a little bit. What you're looking at with this image is an actual combined sewer, all right? So I'm gonna run through the same thing again. Nice day like this, dry weather flow, everything's okay. This is the stuff from your home, goes to the pipe, cleaned, it's all fine. Moderate rain event, same thing, mixes with the, some of the stormwater runoff, but everything's still cool, okay? Goes to the treatment facility, we're still okay. But in those heavy events, all right, the system is designed to outflow directly into the environment, all right? And this, again, is something that in Cleveland happens frequently, okay? So this is what the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is trying to address. So you ask, okay, what's the impact of this combined sewer overflow? You're looking at it, all right? This is, and let me just stress, this is raw sewage that goes right into the environment, okay? This is not good for the environment, it's not good for people in the community, all right? And I'm someone, you know, I like to jog at Edgewater Park, I like to, you know, go out and do that kind of thing. So sometimes when you see these overflow events, these combined sewer overflow events that happen, all right, the result is, you know, we can't go swimming, can't be at the beach, this is just one of the negative effects of combined sewer overflow, all right? So what is the district doing about this? The sewer district is in the midst of a large-scale project to address combined sewer overflow. It's called Project Clean Lake. All right, it's a twenty-five-year, three-billion-dollar effort, okay? The main thrust of which is to significantly cut the volume of combined sewer overflows into our community, all right? We're gonna do this by the use of both gray and green infrastructure. So I'll be honest with you, I mean, there's no way to address a problem of this magnitude without building gray tunnels, okay? So what this, what this image shows is just there's going to be a network of large tunnels, okay? And basically, just briefly, how this kind of works is that these large storage tunnels when the project is all done will be underground, and in these large rain events, they will store that mix of stormwater and sanitary flow until the system can handle it and it can be pumped safely to the wastewater treatment facility where it's clean, all right? So the large-scale tunnels are just a part of the project, all right? But what's bringing us to East Cleveland and what's exciting about what we're out here for is that in addition to the gray infrastructure, these large tunnels, there's also an aspect of Project Clean Lake that's called green infrastructure. The way that I would ask you to think about green infrastructure is to conceptualize it as basically a man-made way in which we are trying to mimic nature, in the way that we soak up and store water when it rains, okay? So this can take a lot of different forms. On one end of the spectrum, this could be like a rain barrel that you have at your home, all right? So think of it like every drop of rain that goes into the rain barrel is one less drop of rain that goes onto the street and into that combined sewer, okay? But on the other end of that spectrum is what's called a detention basin. And that's what we're attempting to build, or what we're proposing to build in East Cleveland. These detention basins, without getting too deep into the weeds, and I have a whole team of experts behind me that can explain it probably better than I can, but a detention basin essentially is a structure that will allow us to gather a large amount of rain water and store it until it can be safely transported, okay? And so it reduces the overall stress on the combined sewer system, okay? So just so you understand the breadth of this project, this diagram shows just the map of all the green infrastructure projects that we have planned throughout the city of Cleveland, all right? Now, the work that we're doing in East Cleveland is, it's on a large scale, it's relatively complex, but it's not unique in the sense that we're doing it in other locations. We have projects planned in various stages of development, University Circle and other locations. So this is just to show you that East Cleveland is part of a larger piece of what we're attempting to do. So what I'm gonna do now is just speak briefly to the work that we have planned in East Cleveland, which is really, I'm sure, what everyone's here to kind of learn about. And what I'm gonna do is just give you some images, not only of the basins sites that we have proposed to build on, but also just some images of what the areas look like currently, some proposed overheads of what they could look like, and some special circumstances that are related to each of these locations. I'll close briefly with just some brief technical information about the basin depths, but essentially, you know, this is what we wanted to make sure that we came out and discussed with you. So we have three proposed basin locations. One is called Page, one is Scioto, one is the Second Avenue Basin. Our Page Basin is... Scioto, yes. Our Page Basin is located on Euclid Avenue between Page and Wyomar. And so if I can just direct you to the map, what we're proposing to do is to, we're in negotiations to acquire all the parcels with the exception of these two large buildings here. And when we have had our discussions with the mayor and some of the administration, quite frankly, he was excited about the prospect of us kind of repurposing this area. This is an image of Page at Elderwood. It's, you know, a rundown building that's there currently. If our project can go forward, we would like to acquire this building and, again, repurpose it and put in its stead the basin that I've kind of described, okay? This is another image of Page from not long ago. It's been used as a dumping site. It's, and I want to be careful where I say, but it's not really providing asset to the community currently, okay? This is an image of what we would hope to do with the Page Basin as our project continues, okay? So what it looks like is kind of a park-like setting, and quite frankly, that is what a lot of these amenities will look like. Now, the basin itself will be this light green area here, but you see all throughout it, we have opportunities for walking trails, some trees, seating, and this will be something that you'll see common in all three of the basin designs that I'll show you. It's an overhead view of what the Page Basin could look like upon completion. Our Scioto Basin, it's located on Hayden between Scioto and Mayfair. So with this site, the special circumstance that I would bring to your attention is obviously the proximity of the basin to Mayfair Elementary School, which is just south of it. Now, to this point, myself and my colleagues have had some productive meetings with not only superintendent of schools, but also some of her colleagues. And really, the goal of those meetings was just to get an idea of ways that our proposed work could not only not burden the school in terms of our construction timeline, but also to think about ways and begin, again, we're early in the phase of this, but to begin to think about ways that also we can have an educational component with what we do that dovetails with the school. So this could take the form of everything from signage in the basin that describes what it does, describes, you know, the environmental impacts, to also even at a slightly deeper level, some curriculum add-ons for the school, okay? So again, this is an image of the existing site at the Hayden and Scioto, and our legal team is in negotiations to acquire some of the parcels in this area. Another image. So, you know, going forward, this is an overhead of what we think that the basin could look like upon completion. The thing I would point you to with this is that, and I believe that this will be common with all three of the basins, if you look at the perforated black line here, you can see that we have the basin area fenced in. I wanted to say, you know, these basins are safe, we're not worried about that. We want to make sure that we take every precaution to make sure that they are, okay? So we're gonna fence everything in. We know that with it being near the school, we want it to be an amenity, but we also want to make sure that it is a worthwhile one within the community. So that's something that we've taken into account. This is an overhead view of what the Scioto Basin could look like. Our third and final basin, which we're calling the Second Avenue Basin, is located at one hundred and thirty-third between Second and First. With this one, you know, we're looking to take, again, the majority of the, or to acquire the majority of the parcels that you see here. The special circumstance that I'll point you to here, and this is something that honestly I want to begin to kind of get some feedback from counsel on, I know I spoke with Mr. Baker a little bit earlier today, but any feedback is welcome. You know, we've recently become aware of the urban gardening hoop house work that's been going on in East Cleveland. And we are in discussions to find a way to either incorporate or at least, in some way accommodate some of the work that these stakeholders are doing. Now, there is a conflict between what we want to use the site for and the work that they're planning. And, you know, again, myself, my colleagues, we're working on ways to potentially find some kind of a marriage with these two amenities that will work for everyone. We welcome input from counsel on this. But again, this is an existing site from Second Avenue and an existing view from First. So again, you know, what we'd like to do is make, you know, some sort of repurposing of this area that in addition to satisfying our ends with the environmental stuff that I described a few minutes ago, also providing some sort of community amenity, all right? This is an overhead of what our Second Avenue Basin could look like upon completion. All right, and so last but not least, and I'm rounding third and heading home here, I just wanted to make sure that I had a table that included our, the basin depths, the beast of our basin, okay? So what the numbers that you're seeing here are the overall depths of how these basins will be when they're done? And then perhaps most importantly for your needs is the ponding depth, the maximum ponding depth during a rain event. So here's what I would say, you know, when there is what's, you know, termed, I guess technically, a significant storm, it's called a five-year, six-hour storm, basically think of that as a really heavy rain, a significant rain. When that occurs, the maximum ponding depth of these basins is the column that you see on the right. So for the Page Basin, that's about four feet, about six feet for Scioto, and about three feet for Second Avenue. Now, the last thing you see there is that, you know, when there is, when there are these large rain events, the basin will drain within less than forty-eight hours, okay? So, you know, we don't anticipate that a lot of people would be out in these basins anyway, you know, in a torrential rain. But this is just so you understand that, you know, kind of begin to get your mind around how deep these will be when they're complete. Now, the last three things I have is just a little bit of an image to hopefully kind of crystallize this a little bit. So you see the Page Basin, this is just a ratio of like the depth. So the Page Basin, again, it's eleven feet deep, but the max ponding depth is this perforated line you see here, and it'll only be about six feet. With Scioto, again, it's about eleven feet deep overall, the maximum ponding depth is about nine feet. And last but not least, the Second Avenue Basin, okay? So last but not least, our project schedule. We've had our thirty percent and sixty percent meetings within the community in East Cleveland in the past several months. At this point, we're just beyond our sixty percent design phase, which is relatively early in the process still. Our ninety percent design will come sometime this fall. We don't have a date on it yet, but, you know, especially in light of this meeting, we'll be sure to communicate that to you as soon as it happens, as soon as we know it, because we want to get as many people from the community out of these meetings so that people know what's going on as possible. We'll have a public meeting for our ninety percent. Our complete design will be done in January, approximately January of twenty sixteen. We'll begin construction in the spring of twenty sixteen. Overall, these basins should take about three years to construct, all right? And last but not least, I provided the council with some business cards. I have a lot of my esteemed colleagues here with me. If you guys have questions, comments going forward, give myself, or Jeff Jow, who's a watershed team leader for East Cleveland, give one of us a call, shoot us an email. If we don't know the answer right away, we'll find out for you. That is what the people are here for. Good bless you. I'm a government affairs specialist, so working with the councils and mayors is why I was hired, okay? So any questions and things going forward, again, reach out to us. I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to come out. Actually, my dad still lives in Carlin, so I'm from East Cleveland, it's good to be back here. Any questions that you have, if we can handle them, and now, I'm not sure how you want to run the meeting, I've probably taken up too much of your time as it is, but again, thank you.
No. I have a couple of questions, sir. Brother Jenkins, and to your group. Number one, I want to ask you, you're gonna do three basins in East Cleveland, is that correct? Now, what is the, what is the norm in other municipalities? How many basins are you doing, like, you're doing this in other municipalities besides East Cleveland, is that correct? What, give me some of the other municipalities that you're doing in this project Clean Lake in. Just give, because it's gonna connect to my question.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Kyle Joyce Wells, I'm the Deputy Director of Watershed Programs, and thanks for having us. So as Joe pointed out, we're doing these projects in East Cleveland, and then the rest of our projects related to green infrastructure are in the city of Cleveland. And that is just because of where the combined sewer system is. So we're doing this project in East Cleveland, and then all the other projects that Joe has on the map here are actually within the city of Cleveland. So there's one at University Circle, there's one in...
Let's stop right there, since that's right next door.
Yeah.
My question is, why are we getting three basins in this little small city? How many are you doing in University Circle?
Well, University Circle's not a basin, it's actually a large pervious parking lot. The reason we're doing these three projects in East Cleveland is because of the way the sewer system is configured in the city and the fact that we can actually capture a significant amount of stormwater and pull it out of the combined system. We're here because you guys have a lot of opportunities for us. It's really dictated by the sewer system. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat. It concerns me because I'm trying to be objective and fair in my questioning.
Yeah.
I'm just considering sewage sitting in a basin.
Well, there, let me stop right there. So this is stormwater.
Storm, okay, stormwater.
This is stormwater. So the other reason we're here in East Cleveland is because you all have Shawbrook and Nine Mile Creek, which run through your communities in Culverts. So those are opportunities to offload that stormwater. So the key thing to understand with the green infrastructure that Joe's talking about is that we are managing only stormwater in those basins, the same as you would see in Solon, Strongsville, if you go into a subdivision and you see those big basins, they're managing stormwater. There's no sewage in these basins.
But it helps us address the overall issue of combined sewer overflow.
No. My other question was... The depth of the basins, one is, what did you say, eleven feet, six feet? Explain that to me, how does that work? You know, why is, you know, and then the forty-eight... Mr. Jenkins, you articulated your presentation real well, but the, what you call it, when it, the ponding, ponding depth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Explain to me how that works.
So, and I'll let Doug handle it, but basically the difference is that the overall basin depth is how deep that the basin is from like if you're standing at the top of it to how deep it is overall. Ponding depth is merely how deep that the water will be in a significant rain event. So that's just the basis of it. Doug, you can explain that further.
Go ahead, Allison, sir. So the overall depth is determined primarily by the sewers that are coming into the basin, which is based on, we are, we're going out away from the basin, picking up a storm sewer that is already a separate storm sewer, and then we have to follow a reasonable grade and bring that sewer into the basin. So the basin depth has to be at least as deep as the sewer we're bringing into. From there, we've adjusted the size of the basin several times to make sure it's big enough that we're not going to fill up that whole eleven-foot depth because we don't want the water rising all the way to the surface. So we tried to make the basins a little bit smaller to use more property and leave more room for some green space on the top, but as we made those smaller, the water depth was becoming greater. So the overall depth, again, is dictated by the sewer coming in, but then the water depth is based on the volume of stormwater that comes into these basins. And so we have managed to size them to reduce it so that the worst we'll see is at the Scioto Basin, and that's for what Joe called a five-year storm, which is approximately every five years, you might get two of them in one year and not another one for ten.
Now, the environmental impact of that, can you control, if the stormwater's raining, and can you control the depth? I mean, will it overflow and flood, or how? Explain that so the public can understand.
A flood would, it would only flood...
The stormwater's coming down, right?
Right.
Into this basin, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And so what happened is, we have an outlet pipe coming out of one end of this that goes into some of the larger storm sewers, and that outlet pipe is sized to allow the flow to come out of these basins at a certain rate. It would have to be a very, very, very extreme storm before the basin itself would overflow onto the street. If that ever happened, it would be such a large storm that your streets would be flooded with or without those basins.
Yeah, and that brings to a question, what's your name and age?
Oh, Allison Schreiber.
Allison, behind you is a, I'm not putting her on the spot, her name is Corinne Stevenson, and she stays up the hill on Terrace, up there in Grandview Terrace. And when we have rains, like we had a couple of days ago where it just rained all day, rocks and dirt and everything flows down to Euclid, and Euclid is flooded for the most part. What is, explain to me, what is that? Is that, that's connected with the sewer, is it not? Is that stormwater, stormwater?
Do you know anything about that?
I don't know what that is.
I do, because every time we have a big rain...
Right.
Euclid floods.
Right. Yeah, and I, we have not looked at that specific issue, but I think it goes back to what Joe talked about in terms of those local sewers. There could be clogging, there could be some other issue causing that, and if you talk to Jeff, we'd be happy to come out and take a look and see what's going on there.
Would you, and it brings me to a basic question you probably get everywhere you go, is how often does this Northeast Ohio Sewer District clean the sewers?
Good question.
In East Cleveland?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's, so we don't clean the sewers in East Cleveland...
We do.
Because those are not our sewers.
Oh.
Yeah. And that's...
That's the property of the city?
We handle the interceptors of large...
But let me... Yeah, so let me, let me do a couple of things, let me point out two things.
All right.
Because I think I hear, I hear you mentioning this, many communities, and it sounds like East Cleveland may have done this as well, contract with Cairo County, which is different. And then the other point I want to raise to your response to Allison is that the operation and maintenance of these basins forever is our responsibility. I just want to make that clear. So if something goes wrong, it'll be Allison's fault, and...
Okay, and my last question, and I, you know, Mr. President, is you mentioned your board of trustees, how large is it, the board of trustees, and how, do you have anyone on your board of trustees from the city of East Cleveland?
So our board of trustees is made up of seven members.
Okay.
And the way that it works is that one of those members represents the city of Cleveland, or two?
East Cleveland?
The city of Cleveland.
Cleveland, Cleveland.
Then the balance of them represent all of the suburban communities that we serve, which East Cleveland is one of them. So if you're asking if there's a specific member of the board that represents East Cleveland, no. But they represent all of our suburban service area as a whole, among the other five.
We have a suburban council of governments that East Cleveland sits on, and they select, I believe it's two of the trustees on our board. So East Cleveland, Cleveland Heights, Shaker Heights, all can, all vote on that representative on our board. Yeah, everybody together.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kind of wanted to go backwards a little bit. Can you show us the map again where you're gonna put...
The three basins?
Not just the three, but you showed us like a wide area view, like county view.
This one, or the combined sewer?
No, no, no.
The one of East Cleveland.
Listen, can you tell me where these basins are going?
Yeah, so, so the green infrastructure basin, this is like a wide angle view of where the basins will be in East Cleveland, but...
That's three.
That's three, right. So, but if you, if you just keep that image in mind, that's this, on a closer view.
Cause I wanted, I wanted to know basins in other areas around the county and how many total were you looking at?
Well, if you, if you go back to, um, so these little blue dots are all the green infrastructure projects that we're gonna build as part of Project Clean Lake, and, um, the other ones such as Buckeye Road, as you go up into, uh, towards the Buckeye neighborhood, Union Avenue, which is on Union Avenue in Slavic Village, uh, Woodland Central, which is, uh, down around Woodland and 74th, uh, 55th, that neighborhood there off of Woodland. So those are all the projects, and they're all a little bit different. The ones in East Cleveland are, um, the, in some ways, some of the largest projects that we're doing, because as I pointed out, these offload points of Nine Mile and Shawbrook, and then the way that the system is configured, and then, I mean, you can comment on this as well, Joe, there's available space for these sort of park-like features to go in, and that's why we're, we've selected this area as well.
That's excellent, now, okay, so basins is what we're putting in East Cleveland. How many other basins and where are they going?
So do you want...
So what are your total number of basins?
So each of those, I'm sorry, Doug Lapata from the Sewer District as well, um, each of those projects has a basin with it of some sort. So, in fact, the two that we did mention there was that are under construction right now, one of them's on the corner of Fair Hill and MLK.
Yes.
And they actually have the hole kinda dug out there, so you might be able to kinda see that from, from the street view. That one kinda has a similar concept where you're bringing new stormwater to the basin, uh, you're letting it, you know, sit in the basin, get water quality treatment before it's discharged to Dome Brook, which is right to the north there as MLK goes north. Um, Urban Ag is another one that's currently under construction, uh, near, uh, Kinsman and 81st Street, 79th Street, there's two basins, there are two bigger basins and a couple littler basins, right? Um, so that's kinda the similar concept of separating stormwater, sending it to the basin, and then, uh, the Kingsbury Run Sewer actually runs right through that same area. So in that case, we're offloading to the Kingsbury Run Sewer. So it's a similar concept in every single one of these projects, but we have nine total projects in this case.
Nine total projects, and East Cleveland has three of them. Okay, now, you just mentioned, your name again was?
Doug Lapata.
Doug, so Doug, you just mentioned that at, at least one of those facilities, the water will be treated.
Right, basically by the basin itself, you know, the plants, the ability for it to store and have materials settle out and stay in the basin, and then it goes off to the storm sewer from there.
But again, I wanna be clear, this is stormwater, not wastewater. So, um, in, in terms of treatment, uh, there's not a water quality issue in terms of a public health issue, any of those things. So this is storm, a stormwater basin similar to you would see in any suburb if you went out to a subdivision. If you go to Brexville, North Ridgeville, any new subdivision has a pond or a basin, and that's doing its stormwater management, this is the same concept.
And how does that water get into the basin?
So as Allison pointed out, you have separate stormwater pipes, so the water flows over land, goes into these catch basins or pipes, and goes into that basin.
So disregard the picture he showed us.
Which picture?
The picture with all three of them merging together. You talked about a combination system.
Right.
Oh, yes, oh, excellent. So, so that's what we're separating out.
Oh, yeah.
So the idea was, that's a great question. So, what Joe showed everybody is the existing system, which is combined, that's the way it was built. Stormwater and sanitary water were intentionally put together, cause at the time, everybody thought it was a great idea. And it was a great idea. And so what we're doing with this project is going in and intentionally separating that stormwater out and running it through the green infrastructure.
Keeping that stormwater out before it ever touches that sanitary.
It doesn't go into the sanitary. Yeah, that's thinking for us.
And I'll point out too, in addition to that, I mean, the other part of this big project is, is we're building a relief sewer, right? So it's an 84-inch relief sewer through Cleveland and East Cleveland, and that particular feature actually carries the combined sewer flow to the deep tunnel that Joe mentioned, the dugway storage tunnel. So instead of that flow going out to receiving water, stream, lake, whatever, it's going into a new 84-inch pipe that's being dropped into this deep storage tunnel 200 feet deep and being stored until it can be treated at our treatment plant. So that's also gonna provide a lot more capacity to the local system as well, because instead of that flow backing up, um, it's gonna drop into our new pipe and be carried to that tunnel. Any other questions?
Yeah, um, I'm sitting here for the mayor. I was just wondering, the Scioto Basin that has a ponding depth of about six feet, will it have protective barriers since it is around Mayfair School?
Yes, it will be fenced in, and that's something we, that, even though we're early in our design phase, that's one of the things that we put away early, that we fence it. Yes, absolutely.
And keep in mind too, these basins aren't meant to be, you know, dry most of the time, you know, so just when it rains, it'll fill a little bit, and maybe, maybe, um, 10, 12 events where there's six inches of water in there, a foot of water. And then we're only talking about the max ponding depth, which is that big five-year storm where everything's, you know, a heavy rain.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Your mind. You have an estimate of the total, total land area you're looking to occupy with the combined basins?
That's a good question. I mean, I guess it's, it's approximately three city blocks, I'm not sure acreage lives else in the community.
Yes, the, the basins themselves, the Second Avenue, and I'm talking the part where we start to slope down, and it will be the, where you see it deeper. The, the Second Avenue Basin is approximately one acre, the other two are approximately two acres, but the two larger ones, the total land area on the top surface is, is close to five acres, and I apologize, I don't remember the total land area for Second Avenue, but for the Scioto, or Scioto I might be saying, um, Scioto and the Page Basins, outside of that two, outside of the two acres, the top surface will be used as open space for other public amenity spaces. And that is part of what, that's part of why, you know, I was hearing a lot of questions about why three in East Cleveland, um, you know, the, when the EPA said that we needed to build these, they were looking at these as benefits to the community, that instead of us just building pipes, they wanted us to start to green up some areas. So the, the overall space is a lot bigger than the basin itself.
Alright. Motion to allow the pounding of these three people for a minute and a half.
Motion to lay public pounding.
A second motion.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, having so much.
I, I, as I stated... I have, uh, questions concerning, you may not be cognizant of this, we have basins all over the city. We got one up on Glen, on Forest Hill. We got one on, uh, Forest Hill over here in Park, we got one up on Coventry, we got one on Eddie Road. I don't know whether you're cognizant of all of this. We, we have four in this city already, and then we're talking about three more, that'll be eight. And we were not tied into those entities. All the other suburbs were tied into them before.
Mr. Mayor, I know, please, go take your time, just get to your question.
Well, Michael, let me...
We, we, we did this, we did it so you had an opportunity, so here's...
Well, I mean, it's true, and that's weird, here as people, I'm, I'm sitting here, I know about these things, so, uh, and I don't see how it's going to benefit us and why we, I know we have space here, because that's what everybody wants, is the land, and we are just giving our land away, we're not benefiting from this at all. So, I just, I know you said you was red up here in East Cleveland, I don't know where you was in 2002 and '03, or whatever, when they was putting all these things in here, uh, for that. So, tell us, what benefit is it going to serve us, period? And then with the Sewer District, whoever, now, they don't do their job, they don't come out and clean out sewers, I have given them information where sewer things are stopped up, they have not been out here, so, so that's why we get a lot of the flooding, what we have here. So, I, I just, I just, it bothers me when we continue to allow people to just come in here and just put stuff in here and, 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 and we benefit from it.
Come on, Mr. Mayor, come on, let's go.
May I respond to the question?
Right, yeah.
Hold on.
You don't know about this, let somebody tell you what's going on in the city.
Mr. Jenkins?
You don't know this.
Oh, okay, uh, and, and I'll allow my colleagues to answer as well. The, the response that I would give it, and, um, I hope this is an adequate response, I think that when we've been in discussions about the benefit that this basin will provide, I think that, or that these basins will provide, you know, that's why when I was thinking about the way to do this presentation, I wanted to be sure to show the current images of what these parcels look like currently, okay? So if I, if I give you, for example, the Page Basin, right now, if you look at it,